All those meeting the order for Franklin County Commissioners Wednesday, August 24th, 2022, 8:30 AM, roll call.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
President.
Commissioner Harris.
President.
Chair Dunn.
President.
Vice Chair Dickinson.
President.
Commissioner Waymire.
Please stand and join me for the President of the League. Thank you, be seated. Oh, wait a minute, there's no, we've got implications today, thank you.
Let's pray. Let me take my scripture reading out of Hebrews. 11, 6. Verse 6. But without faith it is impossible to please him, for he that cometh to God must believe that he is reward of them that doest seek him. Heavenly Father God, right now we come to you, Lord, and seeking you, Lord. We thank you for this day, we thank you for everything you do for us. Lord, help us have faith, Lord God, because we know that you answer our prayers, Lord God, and we thank you for everything, and we give you the praise and the glory in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Derek, any correspondence?
I don't believe so.
Dave, come on up. Tell us about the Tractor Show.
Guys, I'm David Reeves from Williamsburg. I'm president of the Power of the Pass Tractor Show here at Ottawa. Our show's gonna be September 9, 10, and 11. And I think we're gonna have a real good turnout again this year. I mean, we've got, we're featuring Farmall IH, and we're also hosting the Kansas Chapter 3 International Collectors Association Summer Show. So that should bring people in from all around. And IH has always been a good show for us, and we've had lots and lots of phone calls and interest in the show this year, and we're just figuring on having a good time. But what I was, I know you don't take action on anything here public comment, but what I was wondering is if we could get free dumping. This year we'll have two dumpsters brought into the park, and then it'd help us if, you know, you would allow us to dump free. So that's all I got, and I appreciate you guys' support. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Anybody have any problems?
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Chair Dunn.
Yes. You got it, Dave. Consent agenda, all we have on the consent agenda is a meeting minutes for August 17th, 2022. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Chair Dunn.
Yes.
Okay, first time I'm up for business. Brenda, do you want to come up and take over the meeting for now?
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, morning. So, as we all know, Dr. Ransom would like to retire, and Dr. Nichols desires to be our next medical consultant. And as is shown in the contract that you have in front of you, Dr. Nichols will be performing the same duties as Dr. Ransom and receiving the same salary. Are there any questions that you have for me?
I, I had a question.
Sure.
I know that Dr. Ransom has been the county coroner. Is that, is that a different, is that not us? Is that?
Yeah, that, that's a separate.
Separate thing, all right. Because I, I didn't see it on there, and I was like, and I know he doesn't want to do that anymore either, but I didn't see it on there. So that's a different arrangement with a different.
It is, and that's actually proving to be trickier to find.
Yeah, I think.
Dr. Budd is still serving in that role, and he's assured me that he will, but I've assured him that I'm not gonna take that for granted. We're, we're trying to, to find another coroner.
Okay.
But yeah, this doesn't, this agreement doesn't contemplate those services.
And that's a different salary? I mean, that's a different portion of the salary.
And, and to be clear, this is Dr. Budd's pre-COVID salary for the position. I'll, I'll commend Brenda and Pam both. They put a lot of thought into who they, they wanted for this position. They've sat down with Dr. Nichols. I've sat down with Dr. Nichols. We all believe that he's gonna be a great fit. We think philosophically he aligns with where we're at as an organization. We've shared with him some of our vision moving forward. He seems to be fully on board with that. I, I think it'll be a great fit, so, so certainly would recommend that we approve this agreement.
Any other questions for Brenda? Okay, positive emotion agreed. I make a motion to approve Dr. Drew Nichols to be the new Health Department Medical Consultant effective September 1, 2022. So move. Second.
Commissioner Waymire.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Chair Dunn.
Yes.
Hey.
Thank you, Brenda.
Brenda, do you want to just give a staff report while you're up here? Just to state on how things are going?
You bet, absolutely. I always feel very blessed when I get to talk about our wonderful team at the Health Department. We have a great team that's come together and looking at, as Derek alluded to, just some, expanding a little services, still working on the plan, nothing written in concrete by any means. We just want to make sure that everything is all in a row and things will run very smoothly before we expand into that. So we're looking forward to some new things with that. Also, just as we know, we've got our nurses, Pam and Chelsea and Liz, and then we've also got Maya and Tammy and Ashley, our new health educator, and Mary Ann, of course, still doing WIC as well, and Nikki, who helps, keeps us all together as the front desk, which is great, so.
Looking at a Board of Health meeting in the middle of September?
September 19th. We're, Pam and I are already planning what we would like to discuss with all of you, and we look very forward to that. So we have a lot of information that we'll be presenting on September 19th.
Yep, we talked some about a provider during the budget process, still working through the mechanics of all of that with Brenda and Pam. Certainly look to have more conversations with, with all of you moving forward.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you. Anything else you want to be add to that?
I don't, anyone have any questions for Brenda?
I know this issue with the monkeypox is not as serious as what we were talking, but I also remember a couple of years ago, we didn't, it all started out as a little bit of nothing. The pandemic all started out a little bit of nothing, too. And I seen this morning, they reported a case in Douglas County. And I guess, you know, what, what are we doing?
Excellent question.
What are we gonna try to do?
Actually, Pam and I are definitely on top of that. Pam, of course, being the nurse is, definitely helps, leads that, but we also are very fortunate that KDHE, we have a call again this afternoon that they cover that. Sunday night, we were receiving information about it. Also, Dr. Ransom has been, again, great for me to reach out to him if there was a question about it. And so we are definitely staying on top of it. They are still strongly stating that it is a low incidence, that it will be like the COVID pandemic. However, we are preparing just in case that's not true.
Yeah.
So kind of like we are with emergency preparedness. We have another meeting Friday, that, you know, if a tornado hit Ottawa, we're going to be prepared, God forbid. But, so to answer your question, sir, that we are definitely looking at everything, watching it, and making sure they're giving us great tools from KDHE on how to do the signs and symptoms and education, so.
I wasn't real concerned with it as it is now, but it's open to start to mutate the old, like we did before with the other, and change into something else, or
Right.
Or get more susceptible, or more
Yeah.
Hope longer end of it.
Yeah, and it is for a certain population is why Dr. Ransom and all the health, again, all the doctors believe that it won't be so widespread, because with COVID, you could breathe it and get it, but with this, it's actual physical touch. So that's the biggest difference between COVID and monkeypox, is that it's a physical contact in order for you to get it. But COVID, as we know, we were six feet apart because you could get it. So that's why they believe it will be, because it's usually a certain category of people that usually have it. So, but they are definitely preparing us for it, which we do appreciate. But thank you. I, I appreciate the question, and we will learn again more today at 3 o'clock, so. Does that help answer the question, sir? Does that help answer the question?
Yeah. Well, just, you know, it probably wouldn't even think anything about it if we hadn't been through what we'd already been through.
I agree.
Because it, it isn't causing a lot of hospitalizations, it's not causing a lot of deaths, but you don't want it to sneak up on us like we got before, so.
Absolutely, and, and I'm glad you mentioned that. Dr. Ransom, when he was educating me, he said, also the good news about this one, just like you said, it doesn't cause deaths. It can be treatable, so, but thank you. Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Same line, Brenda, they're talking about polio again in the news.
Yes.
I don't know if anybody's asked you about getting a vaccination for polio or anything like that.
Right, and we do, our nurses do, we just had a lot of vaccinations that is happening, but with that in mind, we do know that education is key, that we need to, again, get out and encourage vaccinations, because why that is coming back around is because, again, the lack of people getting vaccinated. So education is key, and that is one of our, I know we're looking at developing some more new marketing materials, and then getting out and helping educate everyone, kind of thing. Having, the good news with COVID, thankfully, now where we're at and with the guidelines changing, the ultimate goal for, you know, we just hired a health educator and myself, of course, I like to do these things as well, is get out and educate the importance of why. So, yes, yeah, we want to prevent, right? Probably want to prevent all these things, so, yes, thank you, yep.
Other questions, Brenda? Thank you, Brenda.
You're welcome. All right, thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Derek, do you want to give a staff report, too?
Yeah, thanks, Roy. Had a nice conversation last week with Janet. Budget appears to be on track. You know, as the five of you know, Janet and I quickly run, or typically run pretty quick budget hearings. I don't believe this year will be an exception. I think we're gonna have a little bit more of a presentation, just because we are exceeding revenue neutral, but we're exceeding it by a modest amount, and I think those revenue neutral notices that went out do a pretty good job of illustrating that. But I'm happy with where that's at. We're right on track. I think Janet could elaborate a little bit more in terms of publication and whatnot, but looking forward to kind of putting a bow on that. I think it's a good budget and very, very happy with it. Redemption Day is coming up for tax sale properties. I believe that's the first week of September, so once that date passes, we will have a firm grasp on those that are eligible, and at that point, I will be back asking for permission to go ahead and, and get another tax sale started. We've had good luck with those recently, just given how hot the market's been, so want to get another one rolling. And then on the ambulance station, you know, there in Wellsville, we originally talked about using Tyler Ellsworth, our bond counsel, as kind of a transactional attorney to help facilitate that. I think that we have decided that, I think Tyler is actually going to work with us on that, and Wellsville will utilize another attorney. We don't anticipate conflict, and certainly this is an agreement that I can put together, but, but on something like this that is going to involve multiple departments, something that's potentially gonna be in place for, gosh, I mean, a decade longer, I just would prefer having another set of eyes on it as well. So he sent us and the city conflict waivers, which that's a legal mechanism, but I'll execute those and we'll keep that process moving forward. But I'm, I'm excited to, you know, we've got a lot in the hopper right now. I'm excited to keep that one moving forward. That's really all I have this morning, Roy, thank you.
Okay.
You have a, if I remember right, I couldn't find my, a concept design of
Absolutely.
I know, we were talking about it here, but you might want to give us all
Yeah.
one of those, so we get a better idea. I mean, it's like, went up there to, to kind of look, to look it over, and if, I'm up there all the time with the others, to just give them a better idea of what the plan's in for where the roads are gonna be, and I know there was a map of that at one time.
Okay. Yeah, I, I don't know that I have that, like the Wellsville City Development Plan, but I'm sure I can get it.
Just the ambulance there in.
Yeah. Well, and
How that road's gonna go.
Okay, yeah, I can get that, and, and they still are gonna have to bid that out, so there's gonna, they're gonna have to go through that process. This is just, this agreement is designed to get us there, but yeah, Don, I can, I'm sure I can get my hands on.
I mean, I, I can drive up there and know what I'm looking at, where some of the other guys might want to drive up there to look at.
Yeah.
Kind of got a, a better idea of, you know, like there's two buildings there, and
Right.
You know, and where are we gonna stand, and how's the road gonna possibly, the street go through there and everything.
Absolutely. Yeah, for sure.
Okay, Kenny, you come? Give us a report of some kind?
So, good morning. First, I wanted just to let you know, I'm guessing some of you might have heard, the guy has submitted his retirement, so he will be retiring on September 30th as his last day. We are trying to sort of put something together, and, and I'll be back with you guys just to let you know whenever we have a little reception or something, because he's definitely served this community for a long time, but, so I, I wanted to make sure you guys were all aware of that, and so we are sort of in that process of hopefully trying to find that position, so, so hopefully we'll get some good candidates as we go through that. The other item that I just wanted to bring up for maybe quick discussion today, more to see if you guys are interested in maybe moving forward with this. Earlier this year, I met with Paul Bean and Sheila Robinson, or Robertson, in regards to the Pathways Committee about health and safety considerations that we use in regards to zoning requests. And what was brought up is that they have a possibility of some grant funding that can be used, and, and helping create plans that, that deal with sort of health and wellness type of issues, and they were asking me if there was anything from that perspective that I could see from a zoning. The response I gave them was, the, the best one I came up with was whether Franklin County would be interested in looking at changes to our regulations on accessory dwelling units. Currently, we do not permit two dwellings on a property, we have no provisions for accessory dwelling units, and, and I think with some of the plans that we've done lately in regards to housing and some other things, you know, we know that there's a, some demand for, for different types of housing available, and they did feel like that would be something that, that might actually qualify for some of that, that grant funding. So I've been having some discussions with them, and we've sort of been starting to look at things, but before we made it down that road too far, I wanted to come back to you guys and see if that's something that, that you're interested in, or if you wanted to have some further discussions on that before, you know, we would start looking a little bit more at, like, you know, what are our regulations going to be? So I can provide a little bit more details or answer questions that you might have in regards to, you know, what are accessory dwellings, you know, but I, I don't know if you'd want to more have a, a study session or something in the future to talk about that in more detail.
And, and I think the study session would be the better forum. I just wanted him to get just some semblance of an idea from you. Is this something you would like to have a thorough discussion about? And if so, we'll put it on a study session and can thoroughly define what a, you know, yes, yeah, absolutely.
What you're saying, Kenny, this is somewhere between a single-family dwelling versus a subdivision
Yes.
type situation.
Yeah, so this would allow for sort of a second unit on the same property. When you look at other communities that have this type of regulation, it, it's usually pretty limited, so first you usually have to have a certain number of acres before you would even be able to, to do it. It usually has to be relatively close, if not attached, to the main dwelling. It also usually is some, limited in size, so, you know, it, it might allow it to be 50% or 25% the size of the main dwelling, but then there's usually also some like upward limit of you can't be more than 900 square foot or something. There, there are a number of communities that have adopted that, those regulations. I know Douglas County, Johnson County, Miami County, and Riley County, I think, were ones that I've definitely seen that have, have sort of looked at those options, and I'm sure there are many others. It's something that's definitely come up for discussion, and it, it, before that, it was already sort of on my radar. I get a lot of phone calls for people that have a family member that they're needing to take care of. You know, we do allow for a hardship mobile home, but that's not quite what a lot of people are looking for, and so this was something that I had already been planning to at least bring up for discussion at, at some point, and this just sort of seemed to be a good time and, and maybe help pay for some of the costs associated with it, so.
That sounds, that sounds like it'd be pretty interesting.
Okay.
Is there a, first, I put another septic system in, or just allow for the extra rooms, I guess?
Um, so what I've seen, just sort of a case-by-case basis, you know, depending on what size and type of septic system they have, they might be able to be able to, you know, handle, you know, one more bedroom, you know, sometimes. You know, I, I know we were dealing with this over in Miami County. The original plan was that they typically don't want multiple septic systems on their properties, they'd rather have it as one, but then they ended up changing that to allow for the accessory dwelling to have its own septic, because just sometimes topography, or, you know, are you really going to make somebody put in a whole new septic system when it's working fine for the house, you know, rather than just putting a small one in? So those are definitely some things that we would be talking about, so.
I, I think the, you know, we've gotten a lot of requests over the years, just, and that is the conventional request, is somebody wants to move a parent onto the property, and I would support at least having this discussion, because I think it would potentially give property owners in Franklin County another option. It, it's, it's just, it's potentially a pro-development move, so, so I, I think we should discuss it. And, and if we were to, I would ask that you bring, you mentioned Johnson and Douglas and Miami and Riley, I would ask that we have, you know, their regulations, and, and we wouldn't need to go through them necessarily in detail, but just to give the board perspective on specifically what other communities are doing, so that they can potentially make the best choice for, for this county.
Yep.
You know, I got a friend in Florida that's going through the same thing, and the common term is a mother-in-law house, is kind of the common, common phrase for that, and the situation is can you, can you hook into the same septic system? If you have another small dwelling, you know, 100, 1,000 square feet or something like that, that'd be a good discussion for a study session to go through that.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Ken. Sheriff, got anything today? I guess not. Sheriff Airplane's cool with the county. Dustin, David?
Commissioners, recently we received a request for speed limit signs in the Walnut Creek Acres Subdivision. It's up near Wellsville, kind of at the northwest corner of Thomas and Vermont. I, I receive speed limit request signs, request for those a few times a year. Most of them don't warrant any further action. This one's a little bit different. It's inside a subdivision. The requister got together with the vast majority of the landowners within that subdivision, and they have submitted a petition for us to consider speed limit signs within that subdivision. They talk about a, a few instances where people were speeding and, and caused some, some issues that, that could have been much worse. They weren't very good, but they could have been much worse. But they would like speed limit signs. They have reached out to law enforcement, and because there aren't signs, it makes it almost impossible for sheriff's officers or city of Wellsville deputies to issue tickets when they don't have those speed limit signs. I have visited with Sheriff Richards and Under Sheriff Laswell about this, and, and we all did a little bit of research on the, the various statutes associated with this, and they are, they don't necessarily speak to this particular situation. They are written mostly for roads outside of urban areas. And so in order to give law enforcement the tools they need to be able to do enforcement within these subdivision, within this subdivision, speed limit signs would be appropriate. I haven't brought this, this sort of request to you in, in quite some time, and, and I am supportive in this particular situation based on the circumstances, and of course, the fact that the, the citizens with, that live in that subdivision are all, almost all of them are on board with this action. And so Sheriff Richards is here, and I'm sure he can answer any questions, too. If it is something that you all feel comfortable moving forward with, I would prepare a resolution to that, to that end, and bring that to you in a upcoming meeting. And discussion with the sheriff, you know, what a, what a speed limit should be in that area. Our thought is, is that having something very similar or the same as what the city of Wellsville has in their, on their streets, which vast majority of them that I've noticed are the, in the 20 mile an hour range, they do have a few streets that are 25, but certainly either one of those would probably be satisfactory, having something in there, in that subdivision will help reduce the, the chances of accidents and, and vehicle pedestrian incidents occurring.
This is something that's enough out of the ordinary that I didn't want to just pop it on an agenda without having an opportunity to gather your thoughts first. Is there any objection to us making this an agenda item? I do want to notice it up, and, and you'll have to pass a resolution to legally do that, but is there any objection to, you know, we, we've had issues with putting speed limits just generally on gravel roads, but this is a little bit different situation, so.
Do you have to have an engineer study?
It recommends an engineering study, but there are, the statutes do allow the, the commission to enact those without a, an engineering study. If, if this were out on an open road, absolutely, we would have that engineering study to to determine what the average speed limits are and help us establish those, those maximum speed limits. In this situation, I think the circumstances, one of the, one of the stirs, one of the reasons for allowing you all to do this, if there are a number of children in the subdivision, well, there are. And, and there's even a daycare that utilized, that is located in this subdivision, and they're afraid to let their kids play out front or travel in a group with the, the daycare providers to other residences during special occasions and that sort of thing because of their roadway in that subdivision. And so, we do have the authority to move forward without the engineering study.
Is this subdivision paved?
It is. In fact, this subdivision is actually several different phases of one subdivision. And so, there's three different street sections, and that is one of the subdivisions that I think two years ago, we overlaid, improved those roads within that subdivision. So, the roads are in, in great condition and they are paved.
Did they put the speed bumps in there too, if they wanted to?
I would be hesitant to do speed bumps, simply because we're responsible for snow removal, and, and that's problematic whenever we're trying to push snow on, on those roads.
Yeah, I think that, that, put that on the agenda. Will do.
Okay, thank you.
Does it go, save? That's it? Okay. Yeah?
As Derek alluded to about the budget, we have got the budget published in the newspaper. It should have been in there yesterday, and we will get that posted on our website soon, and we have to have it done by Saturday, so it's not, not a big deal. So, we have that all finished, and I have had a lot of questions about the revenue neutral rate. Not a lot of them have been about the county, just because, as Derek said, our, our increase is very minimal compared to other taxing jurisdictions in our area. Majority of the concerns on the questioning that we've had in my office on the revenue neutral rate have been the school districts. Number one, the confusion about the different line items that the school districts have. They have the general fund, the supplemental general, and usually upon an interest line. And so, that's somewhat confusing to our residents, but also the increases that all of our school districts have had. So, not a lot of questions about the county, mostly about the school districts, but still fielding a lot of those questions, just people not understanding the revenue neutral rate form in general, and just trying to help them understand that a little bit better.
I, I neglected to mention this, but just an update on another project. Janet and I met with Widow Bryan's about bond defeasance and how to do that, and we got the thumbs up from him. And so, the next step is to get David Arterberry rolling on that, so that, that, we got consultant approval, so that's full speed ahead at this point as well.
Commissioners, Don, do you have anything?
Had that immediate, just might make a comment that Dave and his organization has a heck of a job putting on. That is a very good asset for the county and the city, and, and, you know, it's just, too bad, too bad we don't have more of these things at that side, but we're just lucky that we have a couple of them that a lot of other communities don't have. Get that, want to thank them for all the.
The only thing I had was, I had a prayer policy meeting last night, the Finance Committee, and they're actually in pretty good shape for the year, considering they haven't had their Baumw, Baumow thing that they have. And they had a fairly large grant last year, and they are getting, they're adding two more wings and a surgical unit to their facility, so those are in the process, and that's all I have.
Tended Elizabeth Layton Center Finance Committee, revenue continues to be an issue for ELC since they're now providers, so finding and retaining employees is, of course, an issue, continues to be. And, and they're all behind wages primarily because of this CCBHC designation, which would increase their Medicaid reimbursements. They have not, you know, they're, the state only has so many at a time, pretty much everybody around us has it, so they're able to pay more now, we're not. The silver lining is currently sitting on pretty good, fairly healthy reserves, good reserves. We're gonna have to draw, draw those until our Community Middle Health Center is able to attain that CCBHC designation and get the better reimbursements. It's kind of scary, many of those problems, especially the employment, familiar all around the community, but.
I don't have anything today, so, I'm entertaining a motion to adjourn. We're adjourned.